Welcome, everybody. I will wait for GCTV before I fully get the party started. Let me know when you're ready, Philly. I almost forgot. All right, hello, everybody. Welcome to the Greenfield City Council meeting. Today is May 20th, 2020. It's our 205th regular meeting. It is 7:02 PM. We are via WebEx tonight. How exciting. So, chair statement. This meeting is being recorded and videotaped by the city council. It's being recorded on WebEx by the city council and by GCTV 15. If anyone else here is doing the same, please notify me at this time. Seeing none, we will go ahead and take a roll call of members, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Present.
Counselor Gwen?
Present.
Counselor Disorder? Counselor Disorder?
Present. I'm here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Present.
Counselor Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler?
Here.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Forgie?
Here.
Counselor Ricketts?
Here.
President Stempel?
Present.
Madam President, you have a quorum. Yes?
Perfect, great. Thank you so much. And now, our second virtual pledge of allegiance. And as a reminder, this is, of course, voluntary. Feel free to come off mute. Thank you for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the land, and to the Constitution, the Constitution, and to God, and to freedom, and justice for all.
That was terrible.
Next time, I will do a count of eight. We do have a musician on council, so he must be pretty ashamed. Thank you for indulging me, Councilors. All right, so do I hear a motion to approve the April 15th, 2020 city council meeting minute?
Approved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those, we'll do, so for our motions tonight, we will do roll call. But for this, we will do, everyone, please come off mute. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. At this time?
Stempel?
Yes, ma'am.
Who made the motion?
Oh, yes.
I did.
And who is I?
I is Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
No problem.
Seconded by Gwen.
Got to get back into that rhythm. And just to remind counselors, which now we remember, just so Kathy can be part of the record, when you second, say your last name. And when you move, say your last name. That'll be very helpful to our record, appreciated. I'm going to, so we're going to have communications from the schools and the mayor and city employees. But at this time, for residents who would like to speak tonight during public comment, the way we've been doing this, we have our virtual sign-in sheet, which is our chat box here on WebEx. And you can find the chat box by, at the bottom of the screen, before everyone's heads, you can see there's a microphone, you can see that there's a video icon, you can see that there's a share, which is an arrow pointing up, and then there's a person with some lines. And then next to that, one, two, three, four, five in, there's a chat box, there's like a talk bubble. If you click on that, it'll open the chat box. And we're using the chat box to sign in for public comments. So what you'll do is you'll just write your name and your address for us. And then when we get to public comment tonight, I will call on you based on who's signed in to our chat box. And then you'll have the same three minutes to speak. And it's worked pretty well. And so we're going to keep with that process. And if you have any questions, feel free to come off chat right now to ask them. Otherwise, I will move on to welcoming our superintendent in the school committee to Okay, so the chat box is open for virtual sign-in for public comment. At this time, I welcome our representatives from the schools to speak or to join us at the table, whatever.
Hi, President Stempel. It's Amy Peretti, the Chair of School Committee. I do believe Georgiana has taken the night off. She will not be joining us tonight, so you just get me. I don't know if that's good or bad. I just have a couple of things I wanted to share with the council related to our current situation in the schools. Many of you have likely heard by now that Steve Numbberkau, our business manager, has resigned. He's taken a job in the Andover School District. Excuse me. And we have moved to do a one-month contract with a third party called TMS that will be, has actually already started some responsibilities in transitioning from Steve as our business manager to working with TMS. They will help with everything from just day-to-day operations in this office, as well as helping to look at the budget in terms of making the cuts to the mayor's budget. There's a message, sounds like there's a quality issue. I can turn my video off, that might help.
Oh, you're fine.
Okay, okay.
I can hear okay. I can see you okay.
Okay, okay, I'll keep going. Then, the other thing I wanted to just briefly touch on is that we are, once again, in active negotiations with the GEA. That's the union for the teachers and paraprofessionals, a lot of other professionals in the district. That relates to our anticipated reduction in force that in the teacher's contract, the GEA contract, we're required to give notice by May 15th of any reduction in force. And that has obviously already passed, so they have moved to a new deadline for notification, which is June 5th. And I would, I would just want to give context, too. I know many people in the community are expecting a reduction in force. I will put it in a little bit of context. There are districts out there that have gone with a decade or more without any reductions from year to year. Unfortunately, we have some reductions just about every year in the Greenfield School. So this is something that we are unfortunately used to having to navigate. And I think it's just taken a little bit longer this year with all of the changes to remote learning. But there is a process for negotiating that, some of those pieces upfront with the GEA. And those are the two things I think it's important to update you on, but certainly I would take any questions.
Do we have any questions, and counselors? If you have a question, just type even a letter in the chat box or say "me," whatever, in the chat box. I'll be happy to acknowledge, just so that we're not talking over each other. Counselor Disorder?
Hello there. Thank you for all of that information. And I wondered if you had any updates, which I'm sure we're all curious to know, on, have you heard anything more about the plans for September end school?
Oh, I appreciate that question. It's, in full honesty, we haven't heard about what we're doing with our summer school yet. So the answer to September is certainly no.
Thank you.
And I will say, you know, in hindsight, I had a conversation earlier this afternoon with Georgiana, as well as Member Ekstrom, who's the Vice Chair of the School Committee. And, you know, in hindsight, for many of us, it's looking more and more like, gosh, you know, we probably should have sent everybody home, not even tried to put in a remote learning plan, and really focused on what we were going to do for September. Because I feel like a lot of the things that we are doing, I don't know that any district, I don't know that we are doing them very well, and they're expensive, and we're not able to function in a way that I think is helpful to students and families overall. I think we're doing the best we can. But the hindsight piece of this is pretty clear that, man, we probably could have saved a whole lot of money and effort and frustration if we had really just focused on what are we going to do in September. But we can't, we can't change any of that now. We just got to keep moving forward.
Hopefully, we're not learning and preparing for the next pandemic.
We're always learning, right?
Any other questions from counselors? Seeing none. I'm going to, oop, Counselor Ricketts would like to speak.
Yes, Chairwoman Peretti. I just wondered, with Steve Numbberkau gone, is there any way that the town side could step in and help out at all?
Um, probably yes, but we've worked with TMS in the past. They're very familiar to us. Our district is familiar to them. They were able to step in right away. And I think that there are some things that we really want to have their perspective on because they work with so many other districts. I think that's an asset to us at this point, that we'll be able to have their ideas and perspective as we move forward. It is currently just a one-month contract with them. And we have already started working on a job description for the hiring of a new business manager. So we are planning to hire someone as quick as we can and make this really a temporary Okay, thank you. It's not really my place to offer assistance, but I wanted to anyway. I appreciate the question, for sure. And it's also nice to hear your voice, Penny. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to say seeing none. Thank you very much, Amy, for joining us.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Tell Joe and Marina we said hello.
Well, Joe was, of course, starving at 6:55, but I made it work.
He was a boy after my own heart, always hungry.
You guys all take care and be well. Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
All right. Next, we have communications from our wonderful mayor, Mayor Weidner.
Good evening, counselors. Thank you for that, Ashley. I'm always open to compliments these days. I don't have, well, I guess I have a couple of things, like Amy. Just wanted to give you a little update on the mask program, our mask delivery program. It's a pretty impressive number since the beginning of, when we began it, we've given out over 730 masks. So I'm feeling like that was worthwhile endeavor. It will go on for as long as we get donated masks and for as long as we can keep making them ourselves. So it's an important piece of how we continue to keep this virus at bay for the city of Greenfield. So next up would be, we have put together a plan for a soft opening of a couple of our city buildings next week. So it would be, next week, we will be opening for two days. We have, Danielle Laterno has been putting this plan together with cooperation from folks at the EOC and with all of the department heads who would be involved. It's a very detailed plan that she put in a very succinct, well, reasonably succinct slide presentation for a department heads meeting today, which I am happy for her to share with the city council. So I will tell her tomorrow to send it to you if you want it. The days that will be open next week will be Monday and Friday on a very limited schedule, 10 to 1. The following week, we will be open Monday, Wednesday, I'm sorry, I said Monday and Friday. I meant Wednesday and Friday next week. Monday's a holiday. And the following week, it will be Monday, Wednesday, Friday. The hours, the limited hours that we're open are 10 to 1. The plan involves putting, having a greeter in the city hall. We'll be using the side entrance, which is handicap accessible. There will be only one way in and one way out. We've worked with Matt, whose name is harder to pronounce than Weida Gardner, Iken Bract or Iken Wald, I forget who, but he's our emergency management consultant that's been at the EOC for quite some time. He's very knowledgeable. Danny worked with him to figure out how to accomplish the physical distancing and how to set up the city hall hallways so that we never have more than two people in there, two or three people in there at a time. The offices that will be open in city hall will be Clerk Scott's office and the Treasurer Collector's office. So no more than two people will be allowed in either office at a time. And the, if we have multiple people waiting, they will be waiting outside the building. Everybody must wear a mask to come into the building. We will have masks there available for those who don't have them. If you refuse to wear a mask, you don't get services that day. All of our employees that would be public-facing in those offices will be wearing masks as well while they are working with the public. I, let me think, there's a lot more to this that I need to tell you, so hold on, bear with me. Where was I going? I think the next thing I wanted to, I think that's mostly it. I'm certainly open to questions, but I guess I will take questions and more will come out as we, as we take questions on that. But we felt like it was very important to begin to do this. We worked with the Public Health Department. We based it on the data that we are seeing for Greenfield, and it just seemed like an appropriate time to start working on this. It is a work in progress. We feel like the next two weeks, we'll be able to work out any kinks and decide how best to go forward.
Great, thank you very much. The first question is coming from Counselor Elmer.
Hi, thank you, thank you, Mayor. So I read some time ago that there were free tests available in Orange. I didn't bother to try to sign up because I figured there was probably a waiting list. But do you have any, any indication from the state or anywhere about when tests might be available for the citizens of Greenfield?
Tests are available for the citizens of Greenfield, tests are available for the citizens of Greenfield at the hospital. And they have been for at least a week. Prior to that, you had to have a doctor's referral. Now you do not have to have a doctor's referral. So if you go to the front of the hospital there, you'll see the tents, and they are there and waiting for you. I think every day, although, don't quote me on that.
Thank you very much. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Great. Does that answer your question, Phil?
Yes.
Perfect. All right.
And Phil? Phil, we are working on those tennis courts.
I know, I know. I got word through the tennis people that we may be nailing down lines pretty soon.
Yeah, all right, okay.
Counselor Ricketts, please.
Yes, thank you, President Stempel. Mayor Weidner, I just want to thank you for the communication. You've been keeping us up to date on a weekly basis, or even shorter time than that. I want to thank you for making the mask available. As you could probably guess, it's one of the biggest online arguments about somebody who doesn't wear one and where do they get them, and do we have them available? And we have had them available since the beginning, and I want to thank you for that. And I think you've done everything to let everyone know how to get them. I am glad that, to see the town hall offices open again, even limited. So I'm hoping that you were able to do Plexiglas or whatever it took, so that they feel as safe as we're going to feel coming in with our mask.
Oh, yeah. I didn't give you that detail, but yes, we have had George Vandaliner's group working on Plexiglas in both offices. There were a couple of hiccups along the way. So, and apparently Plexiglas is an extremely hot commodity these days, as you might imagine. So it's taking us a while to get that second order of Plexiglas in. But George did report today in the department heads meeting that, that it should be coming, if not late this week, the first thing next week. So we will certainly do everything. Right now, everybody has Plexiglas in front of them. It's just not quite the way we'd like it to be, to have maximum safety. So we will continue to tweak that going forward.
Follow-up?
Of course.
So I know this year, we can't do anything for Memorial Day, you know, based on mostly the age of those folks that would be being honored in parade and such. So whatever statement that you decide to put out around Memorial Day, I'd like you to include the council, because I'm already missing not being in that parade after being in it every year. And I just know how important that is. So we just want to let veterans know that, yeah, we do still respect, honor them, and, you know.
Oh, thank you, Penny, for bringing that up. And I'm glad I have this opportunity to address that with you this evening. I did just do a video clip today for them at their request. They have canceled the normal parade and celebration. They are putting together a video, and I would encourage you to reach out, you, the council, to reach out to Laura in Veteran Services, or Tim, or both of them. I know that they're not done with it yet. They're hoping to be done with it by Friday, but it could be longer than that. So reach out to her. I'm sure she'd be happy to come by and videotape any one of you that wants to offer a message on behalf of the council. They are honoring this year the veterans who passed at the soldiers' home. So it was our pleasure to be able to also have Danny speak about her father. So there's a video clip of me, very brief, and I didn't, I wasn't there, I wasn't present for Danny's videotape, but it's followed by, she's following me with her honoring of her father.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mayor Weidner? Thank you very much, Mayor.
Sure, happy to do it. And I'm here for a little while for questions, so I'll go off video because I keep getting the message about low bandwidth, so you know what I look like. I'll stick around and, and for a little bit, if you have anything else you want to ask me.
Great, thank you very much. I see Director Gilman's on the line. I see Director Warner. And so if anyone has anything, we didn't necessarily invite anybody. I think budget season does quite enough for everyone this month, but if anyone else has anything else that they'd like to share with the council, Counselor Dolan?
I would just like to extend a special thank you to Director Warner and all the folks at the DBW. I've been watching the Hope Street sidewalk project go forward this week, and it looks like it's going to be fantastic. So thank you all.
Seeing no city staff wanting to speak, we will move to public comment. I don't see anyone signing in, but I will remind those public who are attending tonight that if you would like to speak during this time, to please, we're using our chat box as our virtual sign-in sheet. So if you'd like to speak, please sign in, writing your name and your address into the chat box, and we will call on you to speak, three minutes. I'll give you just about a minute. I don't see, I actually don't see members of the public on here, so we will move on.
Ashley, sorry, so Mayor, for some reason or other, my chat box isn't working either. It won't put the chat comment up. I did forget something important, if you could give me a second?
Sure.
I just wanted to report on the micro enterprise loan, small business loan program that MJ put together along with the CDC. And that applications went out, application process began at the beginning of the week. We had 25 applications. Today, I signed five congratulation letters to five small businesses in town. So that's the first round of funding for that. We're not out of money yet. We have a little bit left, so we are continuing to go through the applications and see who's qualified and see what we can do. And then we have another program coming up shortly that will utilize some additional money, CDBG money out there, and it will be more of a regional application for more funds from the state with Greenfield taking the lead, which is actually one of the better ways to do it. So we'll be helping out the other towns that maybe can't speak as forcefully with the state as if we were all speaking together.
Great, I'm so happy to hear that we had such a great turnout of applications for that program, and that will soon, so when will these five businesses know that they were selected?
As soon as they open their mail.
All good news is welcome. Any bright spots are welcome.
Yeah.
So I, I really look forward to learning who those businesses are and I can't wait, um, to support more. Are there any questions on the, this program from any counselors? Seeing no questions, thank you very much. Um, at this time, I'm going to open our public hearing. It's 7:32, um, for the authorization of the payment of $67.33 for FY15 ever source invoice outstanding balance. And I'm going to kick it over to Vice President Wheeler for our second reading.
Thank you, President Stempel. City Council's second reading, May 20th, 2020. Authorized payment of $67.33 for FY15 ever source invoice outstanding balance. Public hearing, in accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 20th, 2020, at 7:00 PM via WebEx to receive public input on the following. Authorized payment of $67.33 for FY15 ever source invoice outstanding balance. The city council may consider the same on Wednesday, May 20th, 2020, at 7:00 PM via WebEx. Materials can, excuse me, materials can be obtained from the city clerk's office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, by phone, 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Ashley Stempel, Greenfield City Council President.
Thank you very much. Um, moving right along to our motion, and I'll leave that public hearing open until we get to item five. So moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Um, so these first four on the agenda are the zoning ordinance amendments proposed by Counselor Dolan and Vice President Wheeler. And before we go ahead and get started, I did just want to, um, kind of go through the timeline a little bit and explain what each vote means. Does that make sense? Kathy, that's what we discussed, right? I'm sorry. It's been a really long month. Um, so basically, I want everyone to understand what a yes, uh, what a no and what, um, a tabling might mean, um, for each of these. Just because I know when I was a newer counselor, it was, it was a lot of information, um, all at the same time. And so I'm actually, Kathy, I'm gonna ask if you're able to, um, describe what each, I guess, the, the outcome of each type of vote for, for these ordinances would be. Just because I think, I think the intent is to, A, not rush through these. I think the intent is B, to have a discussion and continue to, a discussion. Um, so that being said, um, Clerk Scott, if you were able to explain to counselors, um, what voting down in, uh, ordinance or emotion here would mean, um, approving or voting up in a, a motion of the amendment would mean, or if we tabled, what, what would that mean for each of these today?
I'll certainly do my best. Um, there are four separate motions before you. All proposed zoning amendments by Counselors Wheeler and Dolan. If the zoning amendments are approved, they would obviously, as all votes do, go to the mayor for her consideration. If the zoning amendments by the mayor are, are approved by the mayor, then they would go into effect. If the council were to defeat one of, one of, any of the four, per Massachusetts zoning law 40A, if the planning board forwarded a positive recommendation on the amendment and the council defeated the amendment, the amendment could be brought back up at any time in the future. If the planning board forwarded a negative recommendation and the council defeated the zoning amendment, per Massachusetts general law 40A, this, uh, substantially the same amendment would not be allowed to be brought up for two years. Occasionally in the past, in order to not defeat a zoning amendment that there's still will to have passed, but some of the language may not be to everyone's, um, liking, the council has in the past tabled a zoning proposal which would allow the zoning timeline to expire, which would also allow similar language to be brought up within the two-year period.
Restarting the process.
Restarting, the process could be restarted, yes.
Thank you so much. I know I was going to do that, but my brain is just not here today. Thank you so much, Clerk Scott. Um, so, just, I just wanted everyone to kind of understood where we stood. And then without, um, any further ado, we also just kind of wanted to make, um, I wanted to invite, uh, Vice President Wheeler to kind of make a little bit of a statement because this COVID time and moving to virtual meeting has, um, unintentionally, uh, caused meetings to be canceled and meetings to be rearranged. And I think everyone's done such a great job of being flexible. Um, we just wanted to, to make that statement and thank everybody to kind of following along with us as, as we go through these new tech and virtual spaces, um, where it's not an act of God, I guess it's an act of technology plus an act of God that's causing, um, some disruption in what's a very important process. And so we just wanted to acknowledge that. And I want to invite Vice President Wheeler, if he has any, anything to add to that, um, before we go ahead and get started. Because I know this has been challenging, um, and we're doing the best we can. And I thank everybody for juggling this as well as the budget season.
Thank you, President Stempel. I will be brief. I just want to remind everyone that the proposal put forward by Counselor Dolan and I grew out of the year-long Greenfield Affordable Housing Project, uh, an ad hoc committee formed by former Council President Reno to study the problem of housing affordability in Greenfield. A committee formed in response to the encampments on the common. So that is what is behind all of this. And, and the goal from the beginning is to make housing more affordable in Greenfield. The conversations with the planning board started in September of 2019. It was initiated by council, as you recall, in January 2020. The public hearing process concluded before, uh, the pandemic was declared. There were two public hearings. The first was extremely well attended. Um, so there was vigorous debate up until everything went digital. And then, as everyone, I'm sure, understands, the public process has, um, been somewhat of a struggle since then. But we got to the point where we are all, I think, comfortable meeting, uh, via WebEx. Although the planning board did have some difficulties and had to cancel multiple meetings because of technical issues. So they, um, did not perhaps get to have as much discussion as they would have liked. Um, but we will get to that when we get to their, uh, reports and recommendations. Um, what I would just try to remind everyone is that this was a response to a committee that spent a year discussing this problem. And at the initial public hearing, there was overwhelming positive support. So I just want everyone to remember that there was a public process and that it is, to some degree, our duty to respond to that public process. And I think that's what we'll do here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so now I'd like to invite Counselor Dolan, um, motion one, on page 13.
Sure thing. And, um, with your permission, President Stempel, I, I would like to read the motion, give a brief explanation in kind of simple terms of what the change, the proposed change does, and then read the recommendations from the planning board and from EDC. Is that acceptable?
That sounds acceptable, yep.
Okay.
I think the more, more information we can have, the better.
Yeah, put it all out, uh, at the beginning is the best. So, um, we are on page 13. Move that it be ordered that City Council of Greenfield amend zoning ordinance chapter 200 by amending the following sections and as indicated on the attached exhibit A. Uh, 200-2.1, Terms and Words, Chapter 200, Schedule of Uses, 200-4.7, Central Commercial District, CC, 200-4.8, Limited Commercial District, LC, 200-4.9, General Commercial District, GC, 200-4.2, Rural Residential District, RC, 200-4.3, Suburban Residential District, RB, 200-4.4, Urban Residential District, RA, 200-4.5, 4.5, Semi Residential District, SR, 200-4.6, Health Service District, H, and further amend the table of contents and index of the code and further that non-susceptible changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. So that's the motion. Um, this first one.
It needs to be seconded first.
Oh, excuse me.
So motion's been, been made. Do I hear a second?
Second, Wheeler.
I heard, uh, Counselor Disorga first. All right, the floor is yours.
So, um, this first one accomplishes two things, or a few things that, um, a few different things. First of all, it introduces the definition of dwelling three-family into the code, which would allow for, um, three-family housing to be regulated differently at the city level from multi-family housing. The second change is it, it, uh, eliminates the definition of family that exists in our zoning ordinance. And third, it adds several uses to, um, to a number of different zones. Mainly, it's adding the definition of three-family to be allowed in multiple zones. And it also makes a, a few changes with bed and breakfast and tourist home and allowing, um, single-family, two-family dwellings in the, um, Central Commercial District where it's, it's currently by, by special permit. So that's the content. This got two different recommendations on two different days from the planning board. So I will read those in the order in which we received them. Um, first, the planning board forwarded a positive recommendation with a vote of three to one, uh, to the city council on the proposed zoning amendments to the use schedule of the zoning ordinance relative to expanding residential uses within existing districts. As stated in the December 8th, 2019 document prepared by Counselors Tim Dolan and Otis Wheeler with the following recommendations. Add the existing use category, single-family dwelling, as a use allowed by right within the GC district. Currently, this use is currently only allowed by special permit in this district. So that is a, um, positive recommendation of the language that is on page 18 of your packet. Is that correct? Let me double check that. Yes, it's on page 18 of the packet. Uh, at a more recent meeting, they, the planning board voted three to zero unanimous to forward a positive recommendation to the city council on the proposed zoning amendments to eliminate the definition of family from the zoning ordinance, to amend the existing definition of multi-family from three or more units to four or more dwelling units, and to add a new definition of dwelling three-family as proposed in the March 4th, 2020 version of the proposed zoning amendments submitted by Counselors Tim Dolan and Otis Wheeler. So that, in this case, they forwarded a positive recommendation for the page that is on page 16. And that is eliminating the definition of family without replacing it with a definition of single housekeeping unit. The planning board deemed that unnecessary and thought it was better to just leave it, um, undefined. So that's what's coming from the planning board. EDC last night, or EDC at their, at our, um, April meeting actually voted a four to one positive recommendation on the March 4th, the version dated March 4th in your packet. So the amended version. Anything you'd like me to add or clarify, Counselor Stempel?
It's on page 16.
Yes, which begins on page 16.
Um, so that's from the planning board. And so you voted on this in April, not last night. And you, it sounds like the planning board and the EDC were united on this. Uh, I'm gonna, at this point, I'm gonna acknowledge Counselor Elmer.
Thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to say I was the one, uh, negative vote in the EDC meeting and that was because I wanted to hear from the planning board first. Um, so you could take that as, as unanimous from the EDC.
Thank you. Counselor Dolan.
So at this point, um, as a clarifying note, the second page is identical in the December version and the March version. So I would like to make a motion to strike the, strike what's on the table right now, which is the December version in its entirety, and replace it with the amended version dated March 4th.
On page?
Yes, on page 18.
16.
Second. Sorry.
It'll be really helpful if, if we're looking at the packet and there is a page number just because there's a lot of different versions here. Um, who, who made that second?
Counselor Mayo.
Thank you, Counselor Mayo. All right. And so now we will open the floor for discussion on the motion as amended by Counselor Dolan. And for those who want to see that in front of them, it's on page 16 in the council packet. Counselor Ricketts. You might be muted.
So I'm wondering, um, where they're taking out the word "family", is that to help in the instance of what we saw this winter where a gentleman opened up his house with many rooms to homeless or various friends? But it didn't end, he really couldn't do that legally because of our zoning and it ended up in court. Would this solve that problem in the future? Is this?
It sounds like that was a question for Counselor Dolan or Vice President Wheeler. Um, uh, Counselor Dolan, go ahead and respond.
So this is something we, we actually did a lot of research about. Um, that's not the intention of this, uh, particular change. The intention of this change is to remove something that's discriminatory from our zoning ordinance. Um, I don't think our zoning ordinance has any business defining who's a family and who's not. Uh, with regards to that particular, um, case that you're talking about, we, we went around on this a number of times and the law seems very complex. But where we landed is that these changes would not extend any protection to that circumstance because what he was operating was a, a lodging house or a boarding house rather than, um, and. an ordinary house or an apartment. So that's actually regulated under a different part of the law. And the building inspector would still be, even with all of these changes in place, the building inspector would still have the same power to enforce in situations like that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yeah, Tim answered it. I was just going to answer it, seeing it was a, that it would bounce back through the code enforcement of the building inspector plus the fire inspector because it's a boarded house which falls underneath a different set of rules.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on the motion as amended? And just to remind you, that language is on page sixteen of your packet.
Point of order.
Yes.
Just to clarify, the motion on the table is the motion to amend, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes.
Sorry, my language wasn't clear. All right. So seeing no other comments or questions on the motion to amend, we'll take a roll call vote. In case anyone's having the brain type of day, I am. Your vote yes would be to accept the amended language to the motion. Your vote no would be to reject the amended language to the motion.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
I'm sure, and I vote yes.
The amendment passes.
Great. So now we have an amended motion. Discussion on the amended motion. Going, what's going twice? Another amendment from Counselor Dolan.
Yeah, sorry, the evening may proceed a little bit like this. We're trying to kind of pull the various conversations on this together into a final form. So following up on the Planning Board's recommendation, I would like to move to amend what's currently before us by, hang on, let me get the, too many documents that are, under two hundred dash four dot nine, General Commercial Districts. I would like to add the language. Add the existing use category, single-family dwelling, as a use allowed by right within the GC district. Currently, this use is allowed, is only allowed by special permit in this district. And again, this is just, this is just implementing a recommendation that comes from the Planning Board.
Can you, wait here a second? That was my second from Counselor Gwynn. Breaking the news in the house. I would mute myself, but it's hard. Okay, so motion's been made, second, thank you. If you could provide a little bit more explanation. So is this just clerical, like where these definitions belong somewhere else in the code? Can you explain the rationale for making this amendment as well?
Basically, the intent of all these changes is to allow different kinds of housing to be built in more areas of the city. And currently, I guess, we were really only focusing on the residential zones, but this would also serve to add single-family housing by right in general commercial, which is in line with our intent. It's just not something that we looked at specifically because we're so focused on the residential zones.
Okay, and so I see some questions about what page we're on. This language would be included in the Planning Board recommendations that were forwarded to Councillors via a drive folder today. So they're actually not in our packet, but we did receive recommendations from the Planning Board this week, Monday, maybe. And so to follow along, I just want to make sure I'm getting to everybody in the chat box. And then while we're doing that, if folks wanted to go into their drive and find the documents via the Planning Board recommendations, I recommend that you do that. Vice President Wheeler.
Thank you, President Stumpel. The other use changes are on page eighteen. And I may be addressing the same thing that Clerk Scott would be commenting on, which is that if the Planning Board introduced this change after the public hearing process, then my understanding would be it's a substantive change. And my comment would be that while I support it, it may not be appropriate within the process to make that amendment tonight.
I will withdraw the amendment if that's the consensus.
Let's get through everybody else in the chat box, and then we can move forward. Counselor Elmer, it sounds like the language that you are seeking is on page eighteen. Am I correct? Two hundred dash four nine, General GC District. And then Clerk Scott.
I, thank you, President Stumpel. I was going to ask someone to direct us where to find the language, and I was going to mention that it may be considered a substantive change, although I am not an attorney, that would require a legal opinion.
Okay. Chat box is all caught up. If you would like to withdraw that amendment, now would be the time.
If that concern exists, then let's bring it up in a subsequent round of something. So I'm happy to withdraw.
Withdraw my second.
Thank you. And that was Counselor Gwynn withdrawing his second. All right. So we still have the amended motion on the floor for any further discussion. I want to make sure everyone's on the same page. Are there any questions? Literally and figuratively. No questions. All right. No discussion. We will move to vote. Roll call vote, please. So we are voting to accept the motion as amended without this passed amendment, which was withdrawn.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
I do, and my vote is yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
Wonderful. Moving along, please, to page nineteen. Counselor Dolan.
Okay. Move that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend zoning ordinance, Chapter two hundred dash six dot five, parking requirements, as indicated on the attached Exhibit A, and further amend the table of contents and index of the code, and further that non-susceptible changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield.
Second.
Who made that second?
Counselor Mayo.
Thank you, Counselor Mayo. Motion's been made and seconded. Report from Committee and Planning Board, please.
Okay, so I think this one's pretty self-explanatory. It's changes to the parking requirements. And you'll notice that, again, there are two versions. There was the initial version in December, and then there's a scaled back version dated March fourth. The Planning Board, at their May fifteenth meeting, I'm sorry, it was at their April twenty ninth meeting, voted unanimously with one abstention to forward a positive recommendation to the City Council on the proposed zoning amendments to Section two hundred dash six dot five, Parking Requirements of the Zoning Ordinance, as stated in the March fourth, twenty twenty document prepared by Councillors Tim Dolan and Otis Wheeler with the following recommendation: That further broader study and research be done on the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance. So that's unanimous positive from the, from the Planning Board for the March fourth version. And EDC at the meeting last night also forwarded a unanimous positive recommendation on the March fourth amendments, proposed amendments.
Thank you. I just want to be clear that the March fourth were not amendments. The March fourth was language suggested to both the Planning Board and EDC to take into consideration while they debated the motion. We did not introduce that as an amendment. It is not an amendment. It was just additional language to consider to the amendments. So I just want to be very clear on that. And thank you for that rationale. And I will open the floor for questions. Counselor Dolan.
Just in light of the recommendations from both committees, I think it's appropriate to motion to strike what's in front of us in its entirety and replace it with the suggested language dated March fourth.
Which is the language spanning pages?
Twenty-two to twenty-four.
Second by Jarvis.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Counselor Elmer.
I just wanted to thank Councillors Wheeler and Dolan for their flexibility on this. Their original proposal was no parking, and they very quickly saw the wisdom of requiring at least one parking space. So in several cases, they've shown a willing to compromise, and this is one of them. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Elmer. Any other comments or questions on the motion to amend? Seeing none, we, Vice President Wheeler.
Thank you, Counselor Stumpel. I just thought it would be helpful since, to summarize what this change, essentially, the only changes that we would be voting on if this amendment were to pass would be to reduce the mandatory parking spaces per dwelling unit from two to one, and to reduce the requirements in library parking, which would be relevant to the, obviously, parking, I mean, library building project that is going to come before us. So hopefully, I didn't stumble over that too much, and it is clear.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none. So we will vote to amend the motion. A yes vote is to accept the amended language, a no vote is to reject the amended language. Roll call vote, please. Clerk Scott.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
I do, and my vote is yes.
It's a unanimous, unanimous vote.
All right. So now we have an amended motion on the table. Or is there any further discussion about the motion as amended? I'm seeing none. So we will do one more roll call vote, please. Clerk Scott to vote on the amended motion.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
I do, and my vote is yes.
That's a unanimous.
Thank you very much. Moving on to page twenty-five, please. Counselor Dolan.
Okay, this is where things get real complicated. Move that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend zoning ordinance, Chapter two hundred, Regulations Relating to Accessory Dwelling Units by amending the following sections and as indicated on the attached Exhibit A. Two hundred dash two dot one, Terms and Words, two hundred dash eight dot four, Site Plan Review and Approval, two hundred dash seven dot eighteen, Accessory Dwelling Units, Article Four, Use Regulations, Chapter two hundred, Schedule of Uses, two hundred dash four dot two, Rural Residential District, two hundred dash four dot three, Suburban Residential District, two hundred dash four dot four, Urban Residential District, two hundred dash four dot five, Semi-Residential District, two hundred dash four dot eight, Limited Commercial District, two hundred dash four dot eleven, General Industry District, two hundred dash four dot six, Health Service District, two hundred dash four dot seven, Central Commercial District, two hundred dash four dot nine, General Commercial District, and further amend the table of contents and index of the code, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the City of Greenfield.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Jarvis.
I heard Counselor Disorder. Thank you very much. Report from Committee, please. Counselor Dolan.
Okay, so if I may frame the report from Committee just briefly, there are actually three sets of language that are going to be at play in this conversation. So there's the original as proposed in December, which starts on page twenty-six. There is the suggested amendments from March fourth, which start on page thirty-three. And then the planning director also suggest made some suggestions, which he sent out in a memo, which all councilors have received. And you'll soon see why I'm explaining that. Because the planning board recommended with a vote unanimous vote three to zero to forward a positive recommendation to the City Council on amendments to Section two hundred dot seven dot eighteen accessory dwelling units of the zoning ordinance, keeping detached ADUs by special permits from the zoning Board of Appeals as written on pages nine to fourteen of the memo dated May twelfth, two thousand and twenty from the Department of Planning and Development, with the recommendation that further consideration be given to crafting specific design criteria for detached ADUs to allow them by site plan review in the future. So the planning board voted unanimously for the language starting on page nine in the memo from the planning director. EDC at last night's meeting voted a positive recommendation by a vote of four to one on the same version after a robust discussion. I will also note that there was significant support for the the March fourth version. There are several differences between the two. The most significant and contentious was the March fourth version maintains accessory detached accessory dwelling units by right, whereas the planning director's version, starting on page nine of the memo, has detached accessory dwelling units by special permit.
All right. So. Are there any questions? Counselor Disorder.
This is a question first, and then I would like to speak. Of what you just referred to, Counselor Dolan, is there a motion on the table? Or you were explaining all three. If not, I would like to, if there was no motion on the table, I'd like to speak and make a motion.
There is no motion on the table at present.
Okay. So. Counselor Stempel, may I speak?
Yes.
Okay. So. I, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the, what we have in our packet on page thirty-three, which is the March fourth version for several reasons. First, I think what the planning board just brought forth to us on Friday is a substantive, substantive change. I, but I'm also proposing that we accept this because we had a public hearing.
President Stempel.
Yes.
Was that a motion by Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Yeah, so before you start beginning to speak, Counselor Disorder, the motion has to be accepted, or seconded, rather.
Seconded by Jarvis.
Second from Counselor Jarvis. Thank you. All right. The floor is yours now for rationale.
We, we had a public hearing that spanned two evenings. The first was standing room only at the town hall. There has been overwhelming community support in favor of this zoning change. I actually always keep a tally from all public hearings. There were twenty-eight people who spoke in favor of this amendment, one of whom spoke for a group. I only gave her one. She spoke for a group of four, but I just gave her one in the tally, and there were six opposed. That includes all people who spoke or wrote letters to the paper. The biggest concern that was brought up by those in off the grid with the new A D U language was that our original language did not include owner occupied. And I would like to make note that the March fourth version brings back the language, brings back to the original language where it is indeed owner occupied. We had, as I said, we had the two public hearings. I am quoting from Director Tuarag on on February seventh. He supported the proposed amendments to allow the expanded ADU by right from our mayor in a letter after, as long as it was owner occupied, she said, that said, I agree with allowing the ADUs within, within all districts by right. Going onward, we crafted this ordinance, which we worked on for over a year in planning board, and we strongly considered making it by right to begin with. Delimited in the current proposed zoning bylaw, the accessory dwelling rule, are fifteen regulations that provide verbiage assuring that the ADU will fit in with the neighborhood, i.e., the accessory dwelling unit should be designed so that the appearance of the building remains a single-family resident as much as feasibly possible. Any new entrances have to be located at the side or the rear of the building. Any design has to be compatible with a primary residence. The staircases and egresses need to be on the side or the back. Making it by right gives the right to build the ADU for the owner without excessive cost or difficulty. And we just wanted to point out that in our zoning bylaws, this ADU bylaw, there's like twenty-three conditions, which we are not changing. There are over twenty conditions, which we are not changing all of those. We are still making it so that it has to be similar to the, to the to look as nearly as possible like the house that is next to. Someone could build an accessory, an accessory dwelling unit, an accessory, an accessory building of a three-car garage without obtaining a special permit. It could be within ten feet of the, their neighbor's yard, ten feet within the lot line. It could be of any color, up to thirty-five feet in height and any size, and it could be polka dot. And that is allowed by, by right. And I would strongly urge people to vote in favor of this by right because it does make it extraordinarily difficult on the person who is attempting to, to make one of these. Furthermore, generally, in almost all instances that I researched, they were with an elderly person who was having another family member, and they were constructing the ADU so that the person could stay in their home. That's all I want to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So motions have been made seconded. We're still discussing the motion. Counselor Elmer.
Thank you, President Stempel. The, I'm having deja vu because we just discussed this yesterday. The, the planning board recommended retaining the special permit for detached ADUs. And last night, we voted four to one to recommend that. I've, I understand where Ginny's coming from, Counselor Disorder. She was on the planning board when the first ADU came up, and it was very controversial, and it was painful for everybody to go through that. But just because it's painful doesn't mean that it's, that you have to get rid of the law. Now, when ADUs were first passed with some controversy, the, the special permit was, was part of that to reassure neighbors that if someone wanted to build something that looked over their backyard or somehow was a big problem for them, that they don't get a right to overrule it, but they get the right to have a hearing. And what, what is being suggested now is that we disenfranchise the neighbors. In the so, you know, if, if a three-car garage by right is a big problem, then maybe the, maybe the law should be changed to give more protection to the neighbor. But I don't, I really feel like what we're doing now is under, is undermining the process that got us here. And and I would strongly recommend that we go with the version that the planning board and the EDC approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Counselor. I'm going to actually ask Counselor Jarvis to speak before Counselor Dolan.
Thank you. I'm going to be just short and sweet. Last night, you're right, you're right, Counselor Elmer. I voted yes on that, just to move the question to the council as we had to give a recommendation. That's why there was a yes vote for me. As I said last night, that I feel that, that it doesn't level the playing field because if a certain neighbor wants to force his right to go to court, and the neighbor that's planning on doing the ADU does not have deep enough pockets to fight that person in court, they're just going to give up. And, and I don't see that being a level field either by, by saying, okay, well, I know you can't, yeah, I know you can't fight me in court, so now I'm just going to, I'm going to take this all the way to court, and you're not going to get your ADU. I feel it's an on fear level field in that regards. And for that reason, I believe that it should be by right. I believe if somebody has a, has a property big enough, and they want to move a family member in to help assist with anything possible that they can, that they need assistance with, either paying bills or taking care of the property, it should be that person's right to do so with their property and not being told what they can and can't do because at the end of the day, they purchased the property, they're paying for the property, they're paying the taxes on the property. They should have a say what they can do in their own, own property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dolan. You're going to mute it.
Thank you. I understand Counselor Elmer's concern, and I think we are going to have a little bit of the same conversation tonight, but I think it's important to have that same conversation with the full council. And I think it's particularly important because this change actually gets to something really basic about the zoning changes that I am interested in. And that's weighing our responsibility to people who need housing and to the need for housing with the ability of neighbors to kind of have some control and investment in their neighborhoods. And that's, in some ways, the fundamental tension in zoning. And I mean, I will, I will say for me, zoning's process is never finished. It's it's incremental, and I'm prepared to take whatever incremental step we can take. But in my heart of hearts, I'm absolutely with Counselor Disorder. I believe that special permit process is a disincentive to the construction of housing. And like our zoning ordinance in general, waits the needs of neighbors much higher than the really desperate needs for housing that exist in our community. So to that end, if I'm allowed, I'd like to read an excerpt from some comments I sent to the planning board, just so that the whole council can can consider them.
Is that, I just want to, I just want to give folks the ability to keep the conversation going. So are those comments relevant to what we're talking about right now?
Yes.
Okay.
So, "A by right approach to zoning provides homeowners, landowners, and developers with consistent predictable guidelines allowing them to chart a clear path for an investment in the community and maximize efficiency in terms of both time and money. In contrast, special permits and other discretionary processes introduce uncertainty, which increases costs and acts as a disincentive for investment, making housing less affordable in the aggregate. In the current example of ADUs, a homeowner who wants to create a detached ADU or who needs to do so in order to make a property affordable is unlikely to risk such an investment in the phase of an approval process that's discretionary, unpredictable, and likely contentious. I believe the ways the city can craft regulations for by right development that are clear, explicit, reasonable, consistently enforced, and built on public input. I also believe that the changes to the ADU ordinance on the table now, that would be the March fourth version, are an example of this type of regulation. In the limited cases where the city deemed special permits necessary, I hope that we can all ensure those decisions are made transparently and according to a clear set of criteria. The shift in favor of by right zoning in the planning community tracks with an increased emphasis over the past ten to twenty years on the nationwide lack of affordable housing. The American Planning Association's Housing Policy Guide recommends that cities, quote, "eliminate barriers to affordable and multifamily housing development and exclusionary zoning rules and practices, especially in areas where such development is supported by the necessary transportation, social, cultural, utility, and economic infrastructure. Local jurisdictions should allow multifamily mixed-income housing as a by right use and reduce permitting barriers that create development uncertainty, increase the cost of land and development, and stimulate opposition. Local jurisdictions should streamline approval processes that coincide with identified housing needs and demand and establish higher thresholds that are subject to special permit reviews. To reiterate, this is a policy position ratified by the membership of a prominent professional organization of planners in North America. Additionally, the APA Action Agenda recommends allowing, quote, "multifamily housing as a by right use and establishing higher thresholds that are subject to special permit reviews," unquote, and states that, quote, "when the proposed developments coincide with identified housing needs and demand, the approval process should be streamlined," end quote. Among a number of examples I could cite, the Prince George's County, Maryland, Planning Department explicitly lists-
You're, you're abutting the three minutes, so I just want to let you know.
That's a five minute.
I'm just letting you know. I just kind of, all right, continue, but please, continue.
Explicitly lists implement by right zoning among its land use best practices, while the National Multifamily Housing Council identifies by right zoning as a crucial tool in its housing affordability toolkit. Guidance from the Obama administration in two thousand and sixteen placed, quote, "establish by right development," unquote, at the top of its list of, quote, "actions that states and local jurisdictions have taken to promote healthy, responsive, affordable, high opportunity housing markets." The support for by right zoning over unpredictable special permits is clear and consistent in the planning literature. I'll stop there.
Thank you. I just want to free, we've been having the same people talk, and I want to make sure that we're freeing up to the whole council. And so I didn't mean to interrupt you, but at the same time, I'm trying to make sure that everyone has space tonight. So where was I? Count, so we have a point of order from Counselor Elmer, and then I'll circle back to Vice President Wheeler.
I was just going to object to the reading of a long statement that was already read to the planning board and which they've already made their decision after hearing it. Anyway, it just feels like we didn't need to hear that, but thank you.
Okay. Vice President Wheeler.
Thank you, President Stempel. I mainly want to say that I support this either way. The proposal, the change to make some amendments to the accessory dwelling unit bylaws really came from the planning board. And Counselor Dolan and I were happy to work with them to include language that, that we thought many people would agree with. And the, this special permit around detached ADUs is, seems to be the main area of contention. And I mainly agree with what Counselor Dolan and Disorder and Jarvis said in that I think that when you give two- I think that when you give too much power to a butter, it really puts all the power in the hands of a special interest. And so I think as a councillor, we should be thinking about the common good. And so that's why I would support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hirschfeld.
Yes, I would like to speak against this amendment. I was surprised that councillor Dolan did not come forth with a motion for approval of this. And I would like to, I support the planning board to restrict this, to have the right of residents to come and speak. I was at, I think, the first planning board hearing when one of the butters was going to be seriously affected by putting in this unit. It was a factor of drainage and it was not dealt with. So I, there are other factors besides whether a unit fits within the neighborhood, but it's also a factor here in Greenfield, the fact that we have such a high water table. And when you build something, it does affect the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hirschfeld. Clerk Scott.
So I just did want to let everyone know that I am setting the five-minute timer so that everyone has their own piece, but I also wanted to remind people that the comment section is only to note that you would like to make a comment, not to, you know, state that you would like to make a motion or to amend or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder. All right. Any further discussion on councillor Disorder's amendment? I'm actually a little torn because I hear what councillor Hirschfeld is saying and that makes perfect sense, but being someone who right now is, has been thrust into a family situation where we're scrambling to create a living situation for a loved one and red tape, when you're, when you're racing against time, red tape can seem like making things impossible. And so I recognize that as well. Sometimes health doesn't give you a timeline to have a hearing and stuff like that. So, I'm not upset about ADUs, I swear. And so, and so I can see both sides and I really appreciate the understanding and the debate here tonight because I think it's really important. And that's all I have to say. One more check for comments or questions before we move to a roll call vote on the motion to amend. Seeing none, we will vote. Roll call vote. A yes vote, you accept the motion, I mean, the amendments made by councillor Disorder? I think the biggest one that we're talking about right now is ADU by right or ADU with permit. And then a no is rejecting the language and maybe we'll try.
Councillor Jarvis?
Yes.
Councillor Gwynn?
Yes.
Councillor Disorder?
Yes.
Councillor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councillor Dolan?
Yes.
Councillor Gilmore?
Yes.
Councillor Wheeler?
Yes.
Councillor Mayo?
Yes.
Councillor Hirschfeld?
No.
Councillor Elmer?
No.
Councillor Forgie? Councillor Ricketts?
No.
Would the president like to vote?
I don't think it will sway it either way, so no.
Okay. The motion passes.
Okay, so now we have an amended motion on the table. Discussion on the motion as amended.
I'm just trying to follow along here. Was that an amended or was that the original motion?
It was-
Because councillor, councillor Dolan didn't make a motion when he read the, you know, I'm just wondering, was there a motion made? I think the original motion is what councillor Disorder made. I don't know if it was amended.
It's my understanding that there was language adopted, but-
President Stempel?
Yes.
The original motion was moved by councillor Dolan and seconded by councillor Disorder. Councillor Disorder then made an amendment to change the language as initiated to the language dated March 4th. That was seconded by councillor Jarvis. The vote on that was nine yes, three no.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so the language was amended from what was first initiated.
Yes, thank you.
Of course. Again, all the questions are welcome, all of the questions. He finds the perfect moment. Is there any other questions or comments before I call on councillor Dolan? Seeing none, councillor Dolan.
So first of all, I would like to clarify that I've only spoken once, I think, certainly to this amendment. Most of what I'm doing here is process-related. So if it seems like I'm speaking a lot, it's just because I'm trying to keep the process on track. And in that vein, I would like to propose, I would like to make a motion that we strike on the last page of the, the last page of the March 4th language that we are considering, the line 200-4.11 General Industry District. And the reason for this, it comes from the planning director, is that we already did zoning changes regulating ADUs in that district in the last round of changes that we passed, so after the introduction of the current language.
Second, Wheeler.
So this is housekeeping.
Any clerical stuff? Any questions? And so we did that last time and we thought that it might have been a substantive change? Is that-
This is removing rather than adding. That's the, that's the difference in my understanding.
Thank you. Any discretion on the amendment? We will do a roll call vote, please.
Councillor Jarvis?
Yes.
Councillor Gwynn?
Yes.
Councillor Disorder?
Yes.
Councillor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councillor Dolan?
Yes.
Councillor Gilmore?
Yes.
Councillor Wheeler?
Yes.
Councillor Mayo?
Yes.
Councillor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Councillor Elmer?
Yes.
Councillor Forgie?
Yes.
Councillor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
No, that's okay. So we have a, an amended motion that is now amended again. Are there any questions or comments on the motion as newly amended? Seeing none. I'm going to ask councillor Dolan to summarize the amendments we've made on the motion so that folks know what their yes vote is and what their no vote is.
So based on the now twice amended March 4th version that's on the table, this version will allow all three types of accessory dwelling units within attached and detached by right in a number of residential zones and a few other zones. It does maintain the stipulation that the house must be owner occupied, which was something that came up in our public hearings. And I believe it changes a few of the details, but those are the most significant details.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, clerk Scott, we'll move to a roll call.
Councillor Jarvis?
Yes.
Councillor Gwynn?
Yes.
Councillor Disorder?
Yes.
Councillor Bottomley?
Yes.
Councillor Dolan?
Would you come back to me, please?
Yes. Councillor Gilmore?
Yes.
Councillor Wheeler?
Yes.
Councillor Mayo?
Yes.
Councillor Hirschfeld?
No.
Councillor Elmer?
Can you come back to me, please?
Councillor Forgie?
Yes.
Councillor Ricketts? Does the president wish to vote?
I have too many mouses. My vote would be a yes.
Councillor Dolan?
Yes.
Councillor Elmer? The motion passes.
All right, moving on, please, to page 40. Councillor Dolan.
Moving right along. "Move that it be ordered that the City Council of Greenfield amend zoning ordinance chapter 200-5.2 Table of Dimensional Requirements as indicated on the attached exhibit A and further amend the table of contents and index of the code and further that nonsense changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the normative format of the code of the City of Greenfield."
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second? Who made that second? Second, by Wheeler. Report from committee, please, for Dolan.
Okay, so if we thought the last one was confusing, this one is equally confusing. So this change sought to change the required lot dimensions in specifically the RA and the SR zones. After a significant discussion, the planning board, and we will need to talk about this language, I'll try to clarify this language, voted unanimously three to one, or three to zero, to request that the city council withdraw the proposed zoning amendments relative to the dimensional requirements for the RA and SR districts with the recommendation that a focus group be formed to potentially include a mayor, a member or, or members of the planning board, the zoning board appeals, the mayor's office, the city council, the department of planning and development and interested citizens to study the urban residential and semi-residential zoning districts relative to dimensional requirements and modified or new zoning districts and to add three footnotes to the third sentence of footnote number one in the table of direct dimensional requirements as well as the sentence on lot frontage in footnote one. So the confusing thing here is that the planning board is asking us to do two contradictory things. We can't both withdraw the motion and pass the changes that they would like to see. And the two changes that they would like to see just bring the new definition of three family dwelling, which we just voted on, into conformity with the rest of the code. So that's the only thing that they're recommending that we go forward with. EDC voted unanimously with the same intent, but the language that EDC used was a positive recommendation only for those two very minor changes. So the, the two recommendations use slightly different language, but they're substantively the same. And I believe clerk Scott did, did the copy of those, those changes recommended by EDC go out to the council today?
They did. I saw them go. Yeah, great. Via a, they're all located on our Google Drive. Okay. Discussion, please. Questions, discussion. Councillor, I'm like losing my time. Councillor Dolan?
Again, considering the consensus around this from both boards, I just wanted to make an amendment or make a motion to amend by striking the original in its entirety and replacing it with the version sent by clerk Scott today through the Google Drive containing only the two small changes.
Can you reiterate those two small changes just because folks have that in their packet?
Yes, it might take me just a second to find it.
I might have it open.
If President Stempel, if you would like, I could share the document to the screen.
Could you please? That'd be very helpful. I appreciate that.
It will take me just a minute to get there.
No worries. The night is young.
I have them here if you'd like me to read them.
I think it'll be helpful to just, if the role learner has it available via the screen.
And there, I'm going to cut off the top a little bit so that you can see the table and the red text. Can everyone see that?
Yes, thank you very much. And if Karen wanted to read it as well. Yes, thank you very much. And if Karen wanted to read it as well.
I'm sorry, did you want me to read that?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, uh, in the third sentence of footnote number one, add the text uh, three-family and between the words four and multifamily. And, um, after the text RC dash five thousand square feet, add the following line, "Frontage for three-family lots shall be as followed: RASRHLCGC fifty feet, RB one hundred and forty feet, RC two hundred feet."
Thank you very much. So, motion's been made and seconded, I believe, um, discussion.
President Stempel?
Yes.
Was there a motion to amend?
There's no motion or second.
I, I did not record a motion to amend, other than Counselor,
Counselor Dolan did make that.
Other than Counselor Dolan making a motion, there was no second.
So the motion has been made.
Second by Jarvis.
Thank you. Now, discussion, please. Thank you. And I'm going back to, uh, Counselor Disorder, please. Counselor Disorder, do you still have a question? We're, we're discussing the motion as amended, no? Or not as amended, the amendment to the motion. If you're speaking, you're on mute. All right, moving to Counselor Wheeler.
Thank you, President Stempel. Um, overall, I support the planning board's call for a, uh, committee and further study around the dimensional requirements. Overall, uh, initially proposed changes found overwhelming support in the community and during the public hearing process. But I understand the planning board had concerns, especially around infrastructure capacity. So, I can vote for this amendment in hopes that, uh, further study will happen and that it will happen soon. Um, as to the amendment itself, um, I certainly think it is due diligence to do this piece of housekeeping. I would support the fifty-feet frontage, or I would support a frontage for three families that is reduced from a hundred feet, um, because I don't really think it, it makes any sense to require so much frontage for a three-family structure when the, the point of adding the definition of three family was that a triple-decker can fit easily within a neighborhood full of single and two-family homes. And I would not want to encourage sprawl by supporting a hundred-foot frontage minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other comments or questions? Counselor Disorder?
Okay, let's just hope I can get over here. I can hear you. Okay. I just, Counselor Stempel, first, I just wanted to tell you that when the screen share was up, um, I couldn't get over to the microphone part. I don't know if anyone else has that problem. I, I wanted to point out on this that really the dimensional requirements on the were what they were origi- pretty much originally in the in, before. Just looking at my we didn't make significant changes. We know significant, not huge significant changes were made here.
Is, was, is, I'm, are you all set? Are you looking to read something? Okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
Can't look at both things at once, so that's it.
No, no worries. No, I, trust me, I've got my dual screens up. Any other comments or questions? I guess my concern, um, about the dimensions, I'm a process person, and I don't believe that a study comes after the amendment, um, to the ordinance. Um, in a perfect world, I do believe that the study would come first, and then we would make the adjustment based on the study. So that's kind of where my head is at for this one. Um, and that and, and that's, and that route, too, is my concern that our, our RA district spans the majority of the city, and there is an opportunity, I think there is an appetite between the mayor's office, the planning director, to, um, to, uh, perhaps look into, perhaps, creating zones within our RA, which we would be able to more specifically create minimum lot areas and minimum lot frontages that would make sense for the intentions of these neighborhoods um, versus spanning all throughout the city. So that's kind of my concern. Um, I wouldn't, I would prefer to have study then, then amendments. So that's just where I'm at. Uh, Counselor Forgy's asking, I, if counselors are all set with viewing the screen, I think it's helpful to have it, whether you're an auditory learner or a visual learner, I want to make sure that both, both sets of folks are, are represented on on this, uh, this meeting, especially for something that is deemed complicated. So I'm gonna actually request that the screen stays up for now unless you're having a difficult, I don't know why folks would have a challenge getting to the mute button. My screen is not doing that. So what you, oh, you, what you might be on is full screen, and I recommend removing the full screen, or what you can do is just make sure you're hovering your mouse over the bottom of the screen and the buttons will reappear. I hope that helps. Um, Counselor Gilmore?
I had a, a question. I, I feel like with the amendments, I'm trying to keep this straight, and I, I do agree with you about, um, you know, it feels like Alice in Wonderland, you know, sentence first, verdict afterwards. And I'm wondering, you know, if we're gonna work on this study, does it make sense to vote on this? And regardless of the answer to that question, if we're gonna do a study, how soon would we get results?
Is that all, Counselor Gilmore? I'm guessing, yes.
Yeah, the first two questions, if there's someone on the council who has some insight, that would be great. If there's someone, um, I know we don't have a lot of folks in attendance tonight. I don't know if maybe, um, Director Torog might be a better person to answer this. And I, I, I not try to put, you know, him on the spot, but just a name I pulled out. I, I, I really would feel more comfortable knowing that.
I know that he's not on the call, um, so I don't think we'll get that answer from him. Um, however, I think also we're in a virtual world, and so I'm sure that it wouldn't happen anytime super quick. But Counselor Gwynn, please.
There we go. Um, I would like to kind of agree with President Stempel and Counselor Gilmore. Um, I'm having problems with making a decision on this prior to having the study in, so I don't know what our procedure would be, but I'm a bit uncomfortable moving forward, um, with what we're talking about if we gotta have a study on, on the, the footage. So I, I really don't know the process either, but that's my question.
Thank you. Um, and I wish I could answer that for you, but I'm not sure I can. Um, Counselor Elmer, please.
I, I think I, I might be able to clear things up a little bit. What we're seeing now i- is not what was originally proposed. Originally, the RA minimum lot size in the first version was gonna be reduced to two thousand square feet. Uh, there was some pushback in terms of did, could the plumbing system of the town support it? There was a proposal for five thousand square feet, there was a proposal for four thousand square feet. Finally, um, the, the, and then there was the, the problem that I voiced in that, and that the planning board also had a problem with, with, uh, President Stempel just mentioned, which is that these dimensions are being imposed on a very large area of town and very different neighborhoods. And, um, you know, one solution to that would be to do a complete rezoning of the town, which looked really expensive and was gonna take a lot of time, in which the mayor said frankly, there wasn't gonna be money for that. And then, uh, there was some encouragement from, uh, Planning Director Torog, who thought that with the right committee, some, uh, some, uh, some, uh, uh, changes in the RA could be made and could be done fairly quickly and cheaply without having to hire an outside firm and without having to put a lot of money into it. So as, with that, uh, hope, they suggested that we withdraw it and then try to form that committee. Uh, and so, uh, it felt like it's the kind of thing that could be done in a year, and it was the alternative to a major rezoning. And I, I hope that helps clarify why we're looking at this right now. Really, all we're looking at is the, the changes in red on the screen. And, uh, the dimensions are the ones that exist now. So there are no changes in the dimensions that we're discussing right now. And what, what we're hoping is that a small committee, that Counselors Dolan and Wheeler are on, I hope, can, um, can find a way to fine-tune, uh, where the smaller dimensions would be in the town. I hope that helps.
That was very helpful. Thank you so much, Counselor Elmer. Any further questions or comments? I really, I, I like that plan of approach. Um, and it does draw attention that this, what Counselor Dolan said, this is more or less, um, housekeeping for right now. Um, and so, and I think it, it pertains to also what Counselor Dolan was saying earlier today, that, that this really is an evolutionary process. It's not done overnight, and we'll be working at it long after we leave this planet. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. So there is a motion on the floor to amend. And that is what we're voting on. So we're, we're voting to amend as proposed by Counselor Dolan. Adding in the language in red. Am I correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. No corrections, so I must be right. All right, we will move, uh, Vice President Wheeler.
Sorry, um, I do have a correction. There's an inconsistency. The, um, proposed frontage and on the document on the screen, it proposes a frontage smaller for three families than for single or, uh, two families. So I, I think that, um, I would make a friendly amendment to change that from fifty to seventy-five, if Counselor Dolan would accept.
May I speak?
Yes.
So, um, I had also noticed that, uh, inconsistency, and, um, my intention was to first put forward the amendments from the committees, and then make a second amendment to fix that little issue, but I, I don't see an issue with taking it as a friendly amendment.
And so that's creating consistencies. I don't see seventy-five anywhere else. Is that sixty-five or seventy-five?
So I think the, the intention is that the intention of the committees was that a three-family house should be on a larger lot than a two-family or a single-family, and it already has more square footage. We're adding a slightly higher threshold for frontage as well, which was an oversight of EDC last night.
Okay, and please remind me where that goes, in the, in the note, in the red there?
Yeah, at the bottom where it says RASRHLCGC seventy-five feet RB.
Great.
Thank you, Kathy. Lovely that we can do this.
Great. Friendly amendment accepted. Um, so we have adjusted the fifty to seventy-five. Are there, um, any questions before we move to a vote now that that friendly amendment has been made? Seeing none. So we will do a roll call vote to accept or reject the language as amended. I mean, the motion amendment.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder? Shall I stop, stop sharing the screen so people? Counselor Disorder? Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Dolan, was that yes?
That was a yes.
Thank you. Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgy?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Does the President wish to vote?
No.
No, you don't wish to vote, or you're voting no?
No, it's okay. I don't need to vote.
Thank you. Ten yes, the motion passes.
Okay, so that is the motion to amend. Any discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none. I see. Counselor, Vice President Wheeler?
Thank you, President Stempel. I just wanted to concur with what you and Counselor Gwynn and Counselor Gilmore said earlier about the concern for process, and that, um, after this vote takes place, this is a degree out of, um, the council's hands, and it, it becomes, um, well, probably the, the ball goes to the mayor in terms of next steps to continue this process. And I really hope that the process continues.
Counselor Dolan?
I'd like to mirror that sentiment. Um, I'm optimistic that this, uh, this idea of forming a committee is gonna get us to a better place comprehensively. I would like to say this is a difficult this is a difficult, the dimensional changes are difficult to give up just because what we have on the books now is, I think, absurd. In the RA, which is where I live, you can actually fit four of my house lots on the minimum required lot for a new house. So this is, this is one of those regulations that basically freezes the city in place and keeps us from building housing and expanding the tax base. So I really am hopeful that that committee will forward some pro-housing recommendations.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will vote on the motion as amended, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwen?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
No.
Does the president wish to vote?
No, that's okay. Thank you.
10 yes.
Okay, so the motion as amended passes. Moving along, please, Vice President Wheeler to, actually, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. It's 9:14 PM. And we will move, please, Vice President Wheeler, to page 44.
Thank you. I move that the City Council authorizes the payment of FY15 bills for $67.33 from the FY20 Energy Department budget.
Second Forgie.
Thank you. Report from committee, please.
This received a unanimous positive recommendation from Ways and Means. Essentially, Director Collins found an outstanding balance on the Green River trick invoice, and she traced it all the way back to April of 2015. And bottom line, we owe, the city owes Eversource $67 and some change, and we recommend paying it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwen?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
I'm all set. Brigham might want to vote, though.
12 yes, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Gwen, page 46, please.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 accepts the following reappointments by the mayor for a three-year term to expire June 30, 2023. Phil Cornet, Board of Licensed Commissioners; Ruth Henry, Board of Licensed Commissioners; Patricia Jordan, Council on Aging; Mark Maloney, Franklin County Tech School Committee; William Benson, Public Library Board of Trustees; James Nguyen, Zoning Board of Appeals; William Velp, Trustee of Soldiers Memorial; Charles Roberts, Planning Board; Virginia Disorder, Commission on Disability Access; Frederick Clark, Public Safety Commission; Jean Wall, Planning and Construction Commission; Peter Miller, Cemetery Commission; Tim Blagg, Historical Commission; Arthur Ruggles, Historical Commission; Peter Wozniak, Zoning Board of Appeals; Jonathan Cohen Gorzic, Public Library Board of Trustees.
Second Forgie.
Thank you very much. Discussion, I guess, report from committee, sorry.
I want to just maybe ask for a friendly amendment. The word, the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter accepts the following. We have changed that language to affirms the following, not accepts, which you'll see in the next motion. Affirms goes along with, we're not accepting, it's our job to reject. So affirm is the word that we've been missing all this time. And so we changed it, but it's not in this motion.
Perfect.
This had a positive unanimous recommendation to affirm the reappointments as listed.
Thank you very much. Any discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, we will vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwen?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yeah.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Rickett, yes?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Wonderful. Counselor Gwen, page 49, please.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following reappointments by the mayor for a three-year term to expire June 30, 2023. Ginger Carson, Council of Aging; Marcia Stone, Council on Aging; Donna Dussell, Recreation Commission; Rachel Cashner, Recreation Commission.
Second Forgie.
Thank you. Report from committee?
This also received a positive unanimous recommendation by A&amp;O.
And it has the correct language. Perfect. Any questions or comments?
Yes. Counselor Hirschfeld, I have to recuse myself because Marcia Stone is my wife on the counseling of aging.
She's probably watching at home. Hi, Marcia. Okay. We will take a vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwen?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld has recused himself. Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Wonderful. Counselor Gwen, page 52, please.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 accepts the following appointments by the mayor for a three-year term to expire June 30, 2023. Janine Greaves, Library Board of Trustees; Margot Jones, Historical Commission; Mark Maloney, Planning Board Alternate; Nancy Berchoff, Board of Health.
Second Forgie.
Second.
Motion's been made. Second. Report from committee?
The committee did not take these people up as they came in after or about the time of our meeting. We at chair's meeting decided to move it directly to full council, but all of these members meet the criteria set up by appointments and ordinances.
Thank you. And I assume you want to make the amendment, the friendly amendment to?
Affirm.
Affirm, or please accept with affirm. And at this time, I will recognize Counselor Elmer.
I have to recuse myself. I'm married to at least one of those people.
Noted.
Yes, I'm wondering if anybody on A&amp;O can answer this question. I'm just wondering why we're appointing an alternate to the planning board when there are two vacant seats? Any insights?
Tim, that, I'm sorry, Counselor Dolan, that didn't really come up. So I don't know that was a mayoral, you know, sent to us by the mayor. I don't know if Mayor Weidinger is still on, but that would have been her appointment.
Just curious if it came up. Thank you.
It's likely, it's likely that the individual wanted to serve in that capacity versus serving as the full role. So that's probably why. And that's a great plug. We have two vacancies on our planning board. Sign up. And I do want to also appreciate, like, I so appreciate the work that Mayor Weidinger is doing to make sure that our boards and commissions are full. We're getting tons and tons of appointees every month. And so it's good work. It's important work, making sure that each of these boards and commissions have the membership required to do the work that they do. So super appreciative of that. But I'm guessing, I don't have the information completely, but I'm guessing that might be why. We're seeing an alternate versus someone serving the full capacity. Any other questions? That was a good question. Thank you for raising it. Seeing none, we will vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwen?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer has recused himself. Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts? Counselor Ricketts, thank you.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Excellent. Now we're moving on to presentation of petitions and similar papers. Seeing none. Report of committees. Would any of our committee chairs like to report on happenings going on with their committees at this time? Don't everybody jump at once. Counselor Gilmore, please.
So CRE met last week, and we talked a little bit about the mask program in Greenfield. We also talked about ways that we could sort of promote this so that more people are able to get masks if they feel like those are unavailable. We got some good program information in our inboxes this week. We also talked a little bit about the census, and we're going to start getting updated numbers every month. Danny Laterno was at the meeting, and she was fairly certain that Bill Stathis would be able to get us these numbers. So if that's not true, then I apologize. But we're going to be able to report back to the City Council on that, which, if you are able to remind the people in your circles and kind of like put the word out, census is really important because it's, you know, a matter of funding, and also it's a matter of representation. We don't want to lose a state rep or, you know, congressman or anything like that. So we want to make sure that people are participating.
Really helpful. Thank you so much. Any other committees? And I'd also like to welcome library or public safety reps to speak if wanted. If not, that's fine, too. We can move right on. Seeing none. Unfinished business. Full business. There is some new business. I'm going to jump to the first reading first on page 66, please, Vice President Wheeler.
Thank you, President Stempel. City Council First Reading, May 20, 2020. Appropriate $95,000 from 911 contributory retirement to offset deficit in 151 legal in FY20 operating budget. Appropriate $76,000 from 911 contributory retirement to offset deficit in 914 health insurance in FY20 operating budget. Appropriate $12,000 from 1627 bond premium to offset deficit in bonded debt paydowns in FY20 operating budget. Appropriate $82,086 from 1627 bond premium for GSET to run fiber. Appropriate $60,000 from DPW accounts to 01004700 trash disposal account for short haul. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then Counselor Dolan, an item for new business. Counselor Dolan?
So sorry about that. As I was saying, I would just, in the spirit of mirroring the planning board's request, I'd like to introduce a resolution as follows. The Greenfield City Council hereby recommends the immediate formation of an ad hoc committee to study the Greenfield zoning ordinance and to recommend changes to said ordinance with the purpose of encouraging the development of new housing and the concomitant expansion of the tax base. The committee shall be a joint committee of the legislative and executive branches and shall include a member of the City Council, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, a city employee from the Planning Department, the Economic and Community Development Department, and the Department of Public Works, and at least one Greenfield resident from each of the nine precincts. Changes that the committee present may include but shall not be limited to zone boundaries, dimensional requirements, parking minimums and maximums, regulation of accessory dwelling units, and implementation of smart code or formal code.
Second, Wheeler.
Resolution motion has been made. And second, any discussion? Seeing none, we will take a vote. Oh, we will pass. Question from Counselor Gilmore.
I'm sorry, my Wi-Fi cut out, and I did not catch, what is the, we're forming a commission?
I will. So the resolution is to recommend the swift formation of a committee to enact the zoning review that was recommended by the planning board. the zoning review that was recommended by the Planning Board.
Thank you.
And if I butchered that at all, Counselor Dolan, please reiterate.
You got the gist of it, yes.
So, yeah, so it's my understanding, we just want to ensure that there is some action related to the will of the council and the planning board. Counselor, Vice President Wheeler, please.
Thank you. Friendly amendment to remove the word "at least" so that it just reads one resident from each precinct. I think it would be unfair to leave room to stack in any way. And if that's accepted, I would also make a friendly amendment to somehow insert language that the mayor appoint this body because it is generally the executives' right to appoint a body such as this.
I will take that as a friendly amendment, and I'll go over the second paragraph again with the amendments with A&amp;O.
Continue.
So the committee shall be a joint committee of the legislative and executive branches and shall include the following appointments by the mayor. A member of the City Council, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board of Appeals; a city employee from the Planning Department; the Economic and Community Development Department; and the Department of Public Works; and one Greenfield resident from each of the nine precincts.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We will take a vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority. Can the language please be emailed to the office?
Kathy, may I please vote yes as well?
Yeah. My apologies, President Stempel.
No, no apologies needed. You're totally fine. Okay, so. Moving on to motions for reconsideration. And moving, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Ricketts.
Second Disorder.
There we go. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Are there any extensions? I guess we can all go home. Thank you so much, everybody, for yet another really successful, well-run, successful, productive meeting. You guys are amazing, and I really appreciate working with you and every one of you. Have a great evening, and we will see each other soon. Take care.